Welcome to Athens City Council. This evening, we will be meeting in council committees. The meeting will be called to order by the city council president, who will then pass discussion over to a respective committee. The chair of the committee will introduce the discussion topics and provide an overview of the issues at hand. If needed, members of the administration will offer brief statements to provide further context. We will then welcome input from the community. Any citizens who wish to speak will be asked to state their name and address, both verbally and on the sign and sheet located at the podium. Individuals will be given one opportunity to share their thoughts, and the committee chair will have the authority to limit each speaker to three minutes. Once all citizens have had the opportunity to speak within the 15-minute time period allotted for total public participation on each topic, the public comment portion will be closed. Council committee members will then continue their deliberations. There may be additional questions directed to the administration during this time. When the discussion on the topic concludes, the chair will indicate whether legislation will be introduced at the next regular session of council and move on to the next item on the agenda or adjourn the committee if their work is complete. The next committee chair will then call their committee to order, proceeding in the same manner as before. Once all committees have adjourned, city council will conclude for the evening.
Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, January 27th at 7:02 PM. And tonight, we have a series of committee meetings. We start with our Finance and Personnel Committee, chaired by Member Reisner, joined by Members Wood, Claude Felter, and McCary.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's only one item under Finance and Personnel Committee this evening. The topic is Municipal Court Diversion Program Coordinators, Compensation, and Probation Officer Staffing. According to an email received by the Clerk of Council, the justifications for these ordinances is following. The first ordinance will amend O. 11624 by authorizing a pay increase for one of the diversion program coordinators in Pay Band 4 to $22 an hour. The ordinance will also have to approve retroactive pay effective from the first pay period in 2025. An employee was promoted to this position on 1/125 after the pay rate for this position was approved by council. The second ordinance will amend O. 12124 to increase the general fund probation officer position from one-half to one full-time equivalent. The judge has decided to modify one of these positions to include the role of a probation officer, and as such, we will need to increase the number of probation officers by half to accommodate this change. So that's what's out there right now. Open it for discussion. Anything from the administration?
I don't have anything to add, other than what you just talked about.
Any other elected officials here? No, I don't see any. Okay.
Public next, Member Reisner.
Don't see much of them either. Okay.
Committee members?
No comments?
No? No comments on this? Well, then we'll bring it forward next Monday, I believe. That's all we have for Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Member Reisner. We now move on to the Transportation Committee, chaired by Members Spielenus, joined by Members Claude Felter, McCary, and Reisner.
Okay, oops. Sorry about that. I guess it's working. So we have two items. The first one is the salt program. And obviously, this is an annual thing. We need road salt, as we've noticed these last few weeks, more than usual, as a matter of fact. And so because we've done this every year, I got example of what we did last year. And essentially, from what I understand, because I haven't gotten any additional information, it's basically the same thing. So it's authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency. So we need to get this done. It's a pretty standard thing where, you know, if you buy in bulk toilet paper, anything else, you're going to get a better deal. That's basically what we're doing. It's like, I'm sorry, but it's a no-brainer. So anyway, let's just get it done. Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Administration's up next. So Mayor, anything to add here?
You nailed it. I mean, we do this every year. Unfortunately, last year, we didn't have much of a snowfall at all, so we didn't have to purchase as much salt last year. This year, I can say that we'll definitely be purchasing more. Typically, and it ranges, the cost per ton ranges up and down depending on the market. But using the Cooperative Purchasing Program really helps us kind of level that fluctuation in cost because we're buying in bulk and, as most communities do.
Anybody out there have any comments, questions, concerns? Committee?
My recollection in the past is that we've bought road salt in bulk at times of years where we would get a better deal. Is this a second purchase for this winter? Or is this for a planned later purchase, not in the winter, that will be less expensive? Is there information on there about the planned date of?
Well, last year, it was April 15th when it was passed, which means we need to get on it, so.
Well, maybe I'm remembering wrong, but I thought maybe it was around April when we dealt with it, and then they proceeded to go forward. So I'm just wondering if they're going to do a second purchase now because we've had so much snow.
No. No, this is just going through this process earlier, just getting it out there. And because we won't know until probably April, hopefully won't. Well, we've had snow in April before. But, you know, when we really know what our reserves look like, you know, later on into the spring, then we'll make that purchase. We do watch the market a little bit, but that's, I mean, that's a, it doesn't fluctuate that greatly. And so we'll just go through this process.
Yes.
Just clarification. So are we just approving it now, and then you'll probably buy it in the spring?
Probably.
Okay.
Well, it's going to go through its normal, unless somebody changes it. It's going to go through its normal process, so, you know.
Yeah.
That's a bit. Okay, that was an easy one. All right. The next one is the event Street Closure and International Street Fair. This one is a little different. As you know, the past few years, we have had a block of requests that were all passed essentially at the same time. And so that the city put together all of the anticipated street closures for a variety of events. And then city council passed that as a block. The city wants to not do that anymore. And it wouldn't go back to a process where the, each petitioner would come and give a presentation to justify it. Not going back there. However, what I got from Andrew Chickie said, "Event organizers for 2025 can approach city council for their street closure requests, and council can evaluate and approve each of these closures through their own process directly with the event organizers, as was done prior to 2020." City Council is welcome to use the application form I've created, which is really well done, thank you, Andrew, as part of considering a closure, but certainly don't have to. Once legislation passes, it will continue to work. I, as in Andrew, will continue to work with the organizers and their planning to ensure that they have everything they need to be successful. I will also continue to coordinate city staff for the closure and reopening of the street. Event organizers, number four. Event organizers that want to use the DORA can continue to do so. I will submit draft legislation to council on behalf of the administration for Halloween and Athens Community Arts and Music Festival because these are city-run initiatives. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't like it. I just think that's a colossal waste of our time. And to me, what city council? We have three branches of government. And we have the legislative branch, the executive administrative branch, and the judicial branch. We each have different roles. And to me, what the legislative branch should do is to pass policy. And then, the administration would then decide how to execute that policy. So I'm not happy about this. And I have some thoughts about how what we could do that I think might be perhaps comfortable for, but I think it needs some real discussion. And that is that clearly, we need to get the International Street Fair done. And perhaps we can do that as a one-off. And I'm willing to do that. But my thought is Andrew's form is great. I mean, it is very detailed. So it seems to me, this is my opinion, it seems to me that it would be more efficient and perhaps more effective to create a policy, and again, I don't have words, but, you know, we can talk about it, that would essentially say, "Anyone who wants to have a street closure has to complete this form by X number of whatever, days, months, whatever, prior to it happening." And again, it's very detailed. So if they go through that process and dot all their i's and cross all their t's and all that, and, and I think this is an important one, and they make a public announcement, so, and through the chamber and whatever public media that is available, to announce that they want this. And that gives the businesses and anyone opposed to it an opportunity to say, "No, we don't want that for X." And these are, you know, they have to be legitimate reasons, and they can have a checkbox on that. And if all that works, then the city goes, "Okay, we're good." And if not, then they can't do it. I think that makes it easier for the city and makes it easier for us and makes it easier for Debbie and all kinds of things. Now, again, I don't know that everybody will agree with me on that, but I do not want to go back to everybody, you know, every single street closure has to go through city council. That, to me, is just a colossal waste of our time. And Debbie's and a lot of other people's time. So that is my opinion. And I'd be happy to hear what the administration has to say.
That's you.
Okay. Waiting for your lead, President. You know, first of all, council has the authority to make policy within council's jurisdiction. In other words, you can make policy for the government channel. Those employees work directly for the government channel or for the city council or for the clerk of council, if you want to set up policy. But you don't necessarily create policy and hand it to the mayor for administrative purposes. I set our own policies in the city of Athens when there's policy that's needed. You know, having served as a city council member for four years and now as mayor for 10, and in 2020, as you indicated, we thought, you know, maybe we can streamline this. Prior to that, city council had always approved street closures for different events in the city. It's nothing new. I would contend it's not more load. It's council just doing their job of approving ordinances as they come forward, whether it's a street closing or anything else, for that matter. The issue that we're seeing and have experienced is having this docket, you know, come forward to council with all these meetings. And then we roll into the summer or whatever, and we find that we have to, and we experienced this last summer, you know, to change the date or be accused of changing things when we weren't supposed to. This gets us out of that. We're not having to deal with any of those things. This would be someone coming to city council with whatever their street closing is. We had several last year that were outside the slate. Those had to go to council for consideration. Some of those didn't turn out the way that it was being sold to city council for various events. And so this is just going back to the way things used to be. It is absolutely going to free up the time that Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chickie had to put into monitoring these events. Again, these events, when they come up and they are able to make it within the appropriate timeline, so it's got to be introduced in committee. It's going to have to go through the three readings, and then after that is 30 days. So this, you know, just needs to be message to all event organizers that here's the timeframe. You need to be able to get this to council. I would contend, my own opinion, council, you can, you know, your opinion may be very different from that. But for someone to come in at the last minute and say, "Oh, this event is going to be in two weeks, and we need to close this down. I need to suspend the rules." I would question whether it's for the health, safety, and welfare of the community to be able to try and hustle a street closing through. So this takes the onus off of city administration and puts it on the event organizer. And then council, just going through the process, much like you do with everything else that comes before council for approval, discussion, so on and so forth. So it's just, it's freeing up my staff's time.
And I appreciate that. I do. However, what I was saying is that the policy would require that they have to get in by a certain date.
True.
And so there wouldn't be any last-minute, two-week kind of things. That would be eliminated. That wouldn't be an issue. And if they do, if they fill out everything in the form and everything's cool and people don't object, then we've saved everybody's time, in my opinion. So where's the disconnect, is what I'm not clear about.
I don't think there is a disconnect. I just think that you have an issue with council having to pass ordinances, whether it's 20 ordinances or it's one ordinance.
Well, if it's not necessary, then why bother, is my point.
If what's not necessary?
If it's not necessary for city council to be involved, and it can be done simply.
You do need to be involved.
Yes, we need to be involved in the policy setting of it. Yes, for sure. Yes.
The issue, Chair, is that it's the responsibility of city council to close the street.
Yes.
So that is the only authority that city council has here is to officially say, "Yes, we approve the closure of this block of the street on this date at this time."
And the noise ordinance and the vending, which not all events have to go apply with that because they're not asking for it. But to your point, President Crowell, you're right. Yeah.
So move on to?
Public is next.
Alan Swank, the fourth ward. I almost said third ward, taking your spark, Michael. Fourth ward, city council. I could not agree with Members Spielenus anymore than. Tremendous waste of council's time. Plus, it's not our job. It is not our job. Last fall, when we were going through the process of approving a one-off street festival on Union Street, which the mayor correctly identified as not going the way we planned, it was clearly stated by the administration that in January, we were going to have a meeting. And if you wanted to have a street fair this year, 2025, you better get your butt there, or you're not going to have it. What's changed? What's changed? It was going to work back then, and it could work now. What are the purpose of these street events? What's the purpose of a street event? Beth, what's the purpose of a street event?
To bring the community together.
And to bring visitors to our town. Who's responsible for that? Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau? Where are they in this? My understanding, Chamber of Commerce flat-out said, "We don't want it." And we can't seem to get an answer from the Visitors Bureau Director. I saw that form because Andrew Chickie sent it to me, too. It's multiple pages. And some of the things on that form deal with electric, sound, insurance. I'm going to put myself up there. I'm going to put Member Wood up there. I'm going to put Member Thomas up there. None of us are city administrators, and therefore, I don't think any of us would be in a position to check off on those things. Do you have electrical experience? Do you have sound experience? Do you? I don't, but the administration does. And they should be the one administering that form. Yeah, we have more closures today. Lot more closures than we used to. It used to be easy for council to pass this stuff. We didn't have DORA. We didn't have first and last. We didn't have nearly the closures that we have today. For council to have to approve 10 of these one at a time is a tremendous waste of our time. And you know, when we do them one-off, that kind of plays into, you know what? That street fair two months ago went real well. Why don't we have another one? Let's have one. President Crowell, you were absolutely right. Our job is to approve street closures. Our job is not to approve who gets a street fair and who doesn't. But this system puts us in that position of doing that. So what's the answer? If it was good enough last fall to have a meeting, let's have a meeting in February. We can send a registered letter, if we'd like, to everyone who sponsored a street fair last year. Everyone we know who might want one. That we're going to have a meeting on this date. If you don't get your butt there, as we said last fall, too bad. And whatever forms we have to fill out or all that so that we, as a council, after that in March, can have a committee meeting, three readings, and approve them all for the year and be done with it. Otherwise, we're wasting our time. We're wasting our time. Thank you.
Jessica Thomas. South Shannon, Court Street, at large. I'm going to largely disagree with most of that. I've appreciated the last several years, having done street closures uptown and dealt with them for 27 years. All of the work that Mr. Chickie has put in, and we appreciated the block and how he tried to make this occur. The last few years have been a headache in that more things are happening at different times. People want to add things. And it kind of just came to a lot of workload on his part that wasn't working out. And it also came to, if we approve, you know, we get a list of 15 or 20 up here, there's new ones that want to come in. We would have to basically tear apart the ordinance each and separate them out anyway because we're not going to be able to approve them all at once. I know the lists. I know what's wanting to come in. It's going to be a lot. And there's going to be individual times of year that businesses are not going to want to do it, and they want to be able to come in and talk about it. The idea of having a big meeting sounds good. Coordinating all of that, I don't know whose responsibility that falls. I do know that when we talked about street closures last summer and we were having some issues, Director Eliasson pointed out that closing streets is council's job, and it is council's, you know, that we are, that is our purview, and we do not want to give that away. So if we start saying we're going to give things to other people to do, that could backfire really quickly. I have talked to Mr. Chickie, obviously from a business standpoint and from other people contacting me. And I think what's going back this way means each event has to justify their event. And I think it's going back this way means each event has to justify their event and not just throw it in to someone else. He's still going to go through the checklist, he's still going to be doing the part on the city. The electrical work is not falling on us. They just have to have their paperwork and explain their event so that when they come to us, we can assess, is it a community event, you know, is it for the better of the community? Is it private? All of these different things can come into play, not just, you know, what happened last year. The DORA day is being thrown in there. The point of the DORA was to not close the streets. That did not go well last year. That's clearly not what happened. But at least each time, if they want to use the DORA, boogie responsibly, use the DORA. We can talk about it individually because we have too many people trying to put events in and one big ordinance is just starting to create more problems than it's solving. And I would say it is council's job to do all of those and it's happened for decades. Thank you.
Hi, Michael Wood, Highland Avenue. I'll speak as a community member primarily here. I'm very happy we're breaking these out because, as Jessica pointed out, we're put in a position of voting either for all or none of these. And I don't want to pick and choose on that necessarily, but I also don't want to vote against the street fair. Some of these, I think, are frivolous and are a waste of time. The vast majority of them negatively impact my business. They are, they're bad for business. Alan talked about it last year. They actively hurt retail businesses. And that's point blank the case. Some of them serve a greater good. I think the street fair falls in that category. I think there are many others that, you know, deserve some sort of balance over the benefit of individual stores, but they do have a negative impact on that, except for the bars. And so I like having it split out because I don't want to be put in a position of trying to vote against the street fair. I want to be able to have a fair discussion about, do we want every weekend to have a DORA closing? I also think that the mayor brought up something, I'm going to go back to my notes, I was talking to Brandon Thompson, who many of you know about this at length. He was pointing out that having it as a block stifles innovation. Something like Street Jam would not be able to succeed in the way that it has if it had to come up. This gives the smaller, new things a chance to succeed. Same with the Juneteenth celebration that came up. That would have been blocked out because, oh, it didn't come up by January. So new people coming into the community couldn't add to the discussion. Finally, yeah, I want to highlight what, kind of what the mayor was saying. Andrew Chicky shouldn't be sort of the person having to make these decisions. His name gets bandied about a lot these days, I think unfairly. We have people asking for more transparency in decision-making, we have people asking for not having all of this be put on those folks. I don't think they should have to have, be the sort of the public, lack of a better term, public whipping boy for somebody being upset about a road closure. So I think that not making them carry that water is a net benefit. So for those five reasons, I'm very happy that we're splitting it out. Thank you.
Okay, doesn't look like there are any more hands, so, all right. I know how you feel, Jeff, but keep going. Just because of things he's said in the past, we haven't been talking.
Mind reader. Yeah, I'll be blunt. I'm for this. I want to take the power back. Council has certain areas of authority. This is one of them, and I've always enjoyed it, frankly. I've had discussions at times early on council with OU administrators who were wanting certain streets handed over to them and demanding that the administration give them the street. After all, they needed it. And I would just look at them and say, no, mayor's got nothing to do with it. Council has everything to do with it, so it's not going to happen. As for being efficient, well, you know, government is not particularly noted for being efficient. You know, I'm kind of glad it's not because it means it's ponderous and it's slow and everybody eventually gets a chance to have something to say. If we're going to just simply do things in one sweeping ordinance, you know, just get it done and over with and save a lot of time, what time are we saving? I mean, for what purpose? Where does that extra 10 minutes or half hour go? I mean, I've got nothing better to do. I'm here. Yeah, it is, but nonetheless, that's why I'm being paid the big bucks, make the big decision. So there, that's where I stand and I can say no more.
Saw that coming. Yes, Beth?
So I wonder if this, what is apparently a really excellent and detailed form that Andrew Chicky has created, gives us a little bit of middle ground here. I wonder if it would be possible to require people to have submitted that form and been approved before their proposal comes before council so that we are not in the position of even being perceived as deciding what is a good event and what is not. We would know that the administration has approved the event and then it would just be about the road closure, which is the role of council. Because I'd know that if we say no to something, people are going to say, oh, council hates that event. But if that had already been approved or not, on the basis of apparently a truly excellent form, then the scope of what council is doing would be more limited to the road closures, which, as you said, is our role. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate Member Claude Felder's suggestions and I do think it makes sense to start with an administrative review of the form that's completed so that we know that there aren't known conflicts with construction projects or, you know, other events. And then it comes to council for a final review that can be done in front of the public where perhaps members of the Chamber of Commerce or the Visitors Bureau or other business interests might be able to even come and share considerations that we hadn't thought of, that we do want to be increasingly sensitive to. So I think there might be some middle ground, but I'm comfortable with reviewing the, each event since it is council's purview to close streets ultimately.
Yes.
Question of clarification. The event, the agenda item tonight, closure International Street Fair, has that gone through? How did that come to your?
I mean, that's all. That's, I mean, I read you basically what I got from Andrew Chicky and we had a conversation about it. And so that.
So have they filled out his form?
Have they?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, I mean, it's April something. Anyway, but yeah, it came to us because it's the first one.
So if I understand correctly, and perhaps the mayor can help us here, this is the procedure that this side of the dais has described. The form has been filled out by Mr. Chicky. Mr. Chicky has now advanced the form to the clerk and they are requesting the street closure.
That's correct.
Yes.
Just point of clarification, because I just want to be clear with Councilmember Claude Felder and Councilmember McCary and some of the things that you're saying. They fill out, the organizer fills out that form in detail. There is no box on there that says, the mayor says, yes, we approve this, this event, or no, we do not. That's not the purpose or intent of that form. That inform is to have them indicate, do you need electricity? That requires my electricians going out there and making sure that they have what they need. Does this require bagging of the meters? Typically it does, you know. Are you prepared for those, you know, when do you want the meters to be bagged? When is the beginning of the event? You know, really, our policy when bagging the meters for events, you know, will follow that. So they, our event will start at 11:00 AM or it'll be at 10:00 AM with the parade of the flags for the International Street Fest. Okay, well, that's going to require that we bag the meters likely the evening before to where people get up in the morning, they're driving uptown, they recognize the meter's all bagged, I can't park here. Great. You know, is there a need for law enforcement to be present in the uptown event for whatever said event is, you know? Yes, no? I mean, you've seen the whole thing. It's just, it's basically us understanding what the event organizer needs, but nowhere on that form does it sit there and say, the administration thinks that this is a great idea, yes, we approve or we don't approve. That's for council to decide. You can look at the document, you can look at the form and say, International Street Fest, you've been doing this for dozens and dozens of years, these are all the things you want? Great, this is the date you want to be, have the street closed, you know?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes, but I do have to say, since everybody shut me down for my initial idea, but again, the form is really good. However, one thing that seems to be missing that I did bring up earlier is, and it's been brought up a couple of times, it does seem to interfere with business. So it seems to me that something in the process to get feedback from the businesses, I think, makes sense because if it is hurting business, is it worth it or not? I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for that kind of input in some way. Yes.
Is that the purpose of a ordinance going through city council? Is that the public will have an opportunity to come and say, this street closure is not good for my business and their business and their business?
Yeah.
And then council can make a decision based on that feedback?
Well, that is true. However, oftentimes people don't know that it's happening, sorry to say. So making, requiring some public announcement of some sort, you know, announcement in, I don't know, the Chamber of Commerce, like I said, or in some kind of the local news or whatever, I think is not an unreasonable request. I think it's worth considering. Can I go back to the audience?
The public has already spoken.
But point of order, if you can go back to administration, you can go back to the audience.
Not according to the rules, Member Swank.
But the rules that say you can go back to the administration.
Yeah, it does say you can, you can ask additional questions from the administration.
Okay.
So we'll talk about this next week at first reading then.
Yes, I'm just wondering if this will put council in the position, once we, yeah, of essentially deciding little details about, we don't like that this event is planning on using glitter, it's not environmentally friendly. I just wonder how we can avoid getting too into the weeds about what people are going to be bringing to these potential council meetings.
Well, this would be specifically about the impact on business because people are losing business and is, and so is it worth it? I don't know, I think it's worth a conversation.
Mr. President, can I ask a point of order?
Sure.
We're talking about the International Street Fair, but it appears we've morphed into a larger issue.
Agreed.
Would the subject of street, for lack of a better term, street closure policy have to come back before council at the committee level? Or could such a policy be developed into an ordinance for first reading?
So I would just say, Mr. Swank, that I'm uncomfortable with the word policy. Whose policy are you creating? City council is not going to create, if you want to do legislation and put a law in our code of, municipal code for how something is done in the city, that's one thing. But a policy that, the way the city administration runs itself, that wouldn't be up to city council.
Well, I guess what I was getting at, the point was that people would come before and somebody used the thing of glitter, somebody did this, somebody did that, you know, what would we be entertaining? So that's why I use the word policy. And perhaps, you know, we can split hairs and all that, but I guess the bigger question is, would this need to come back before council as a, at the committee level? Or could we, since we're talking about it tonight, could it come as a first reading?
We don't have the law director's office this evening. We'll ask the clerk, I would think.
What are you asking? What will come back at first reading?
How we're going to deal with street closures, because this is a radical change.
This is basically the International Street Fair.
Okay, yeah, so if we're going to talk about street fairs in general, would they need to come before committee? Okay, and what committee would you foresee that coming out of?
Transportation.
Because it deals with street closures. Okay.
Thank you, Members Swank. Back to you, Chair, to be honest.
Okay, well, I'm fine with going forward, which I said in the beginning, with this International Street Fair and then discussing more about how we want to handle it going forward with the rest of them this year. When I talked to Andrew Chicky, he said that he was, my understanding of the conversation was that he said that there's, he's been reaching out to other groups, which was mentioned, and that there was someone who might be willing to pull a committee together to help work on something going forward rather than it being every single one, the way we're talking about it now. So this may be an interim strategy and I'm okay with that. But I think we should look at the International Street Fair next week, since they did complete the form. Thank you for letting me know. And we'll see what happens. That's it for Transportation Committee. Thank you, everyone, for your input. That was lively. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Members Swank. We now move on to City and Safety Services. This is chaired by Member McCary, joined by Members Reisner, Swank, and Thomas.
Good evening. We have just one item on our City and Safety Services agenda, and that is water treatment softening salt. This is an annual purchase, unlike an earlier agenda item, and we will receive our ordinance for first reading next week detailing the cost. Sometimes there's a small variation from year to year, but this is a required purchase each year. With that, I'll ask if the administration has any comment on our annual purchase of water softening salt. Do members of the public have comments and questions on this interesting agenda item? Or salt? I did ask once hypothetically what would happen if we didn't purchase the salt and the City Safety Services Director let us know that that's a terrible idea for all kinds of reasons. But not seeing any comments from the public, do we have any from members of the committee? All right, this is a pretty straightforward item each year, so I think seeing none, that concludes City and Safety Services.
Thank you, Member McCary. We now move on to Committee of the Whole. So we will have all council members back at their seats. We have one item under Committee of the Whole this evening, the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan Potential Updates. And this is being introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. Give everyone a moment to get settled. First, recognizing that not all members of council have been here since the adoption of our Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan, I did want to just share my overall hope that our conversation might increase familiarity with each of the different sections within the comprehensive plan and have a focus specifically this evening on the nine diversity and inclusion goals in the diversity and inclusion section of the plan. The ordinance 144-20 was what adopted the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan back in December of 2020, and that was following years of engagement and public input, developed through a citizen-led process with extensive neighborhood and stakeholder participation. We have had some conversations as council about our intended commitments to diversity and inclusion since then, including Resolution 06-23, in which we reaffirmed the city's opposition to bigotry, prejudice, racial injustice, and other forms of oppression that work against diversity and inclusion. And we specifically said that we wanted to make sure that our efforts were respectful of diversity with regard to race, as well as age, religion, ethnicity, citizenship status, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic diversity, and really just what we can do to contribute to an intersectional democracy. So specifically, the nine goals within the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan have a range of levels of specificity, everything from planning and advertising sober events in the city being quite specific, and an example of a broader goal being creating policies, plans. And an example of a broader goal being creating policies, plans, practices, programs, and services that support diversity and inclusion. This evening, I would like to just share some observations I've made as a member of a working group that has been supporting the mayor's administration's efforts around racial equity in particular. That working group was called for in our 2020 resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis. And that group has met periodically with members of the administration, including our Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Accessibility Coordinator, and found that in general, some of the community concerns that have emerged in recent months and years aren't necessarily reflected in that diversity and inclusion chapter, including an increasing concern over housing insecurity and mental health. So those are just two examples of topics that are not currently mentioned in our Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan that potentially could find their way into a future update. But future updates in a formal way would require potentially the reestablishment or reconvening of the Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission as outlined in city code. So I will just share a couple of other observations, specifically with regard to the issue of potentially some overly specific goals in that diversity and inclusion section. Since we have established in our 2023 resolution reaffirming our commitment to working on diversity and inclusion, it does seem to me that we would want the goals in that section to reflect the different demographic populations that we want to make sure that we're serving with an ultimate goal of promoting social cohesion across different demographic groups. We've been able to do so through a partnership with the Strong Cities Network that focuses on social cohesion and combating hate and polarization. And we've done some great work with advancing the creation of a racial equity plan, thanks to a partnership with the National League of Cities and their racial equity and leadership cohort. But I would say that potentially the Athens Community Relations Commission, which is the only established commission focused on diversity and inclusion, other than the Commission on Disabilities, it would need some increased capacity in order to really focus on helping support the city's efforts around socioeconomic diversity, religious tolerance, and LGBTQ inclusion, and the many forms of inclusion that are important to us. That is the introduction I'd like to provide as the person who asked for this to be on the agenda and as one of two council members who's been working with that racial equity working group, the other being President Krell and prior to President Krell, President Nysley. With that, President, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we go to the administration?
Correct.
All right. And will you direct this or will I?
You will.
All right. Mr. Mayor, as a member of the administration, do you have any comments?
I do. Number one, I appreciate the work that you've put into this and in particular, talking about the work that the Athens County Racial Equity Coalition has been putting towards this. I know that, again, our DEIA coordinator, Lacy Rogers, has been involved in that group's process moving forward. And I want to tell council, regardless of a lot of the rhetoric that you're hearing at the national level and somewhat at the state level, the city remains dedicated towards addresses, addressing systems of racism here in our community. I am fully invested in continuing to work in the world of racial equity here in Athens and supporting our DEIA coordinator with their efforts in the, on this topic. I've, I've had, you know, certainly had a conversation with Micah in talking through comprehensive plan in general. And one of the things that is important to note is that we're, I believe, in year five, or it has been almost five years since the Comprehensive Plan Vision 2040 came out as codified by council. It does speak to having, you know, a five-year review, certainly it speaks to reviews. It is time to work on that review of where we are at this point in time with the comprehensive plan. That is something that our city planner, Megan Jennings, is going to be taking up this year and really looking into it and, and will be looking closely at some of the things, Kelsey McCary, you were mentioning within that. I do want to point out something to council that I think is important. In 2006, and I believe this was led by, at the time, council member and president of Planning and Development Committee, Debbie Phillips, put forward the establishment of a Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission. It's a council constituted commission to do a lot of this review of the comprehensive plan. The reason I'm stating that is no one individual can go in and start making edits to the comprehensive plan. I feel strongly about that, that that needs to be continued, we can, need to continue to adhere to that. Because if you think about it, the comprehensive plan of our city, whether it was the 2006 Comprehensive Plan or it was the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, 2021, I think is when council codified it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was in that timeframe that council approved the 2.0 Comprehensive Plan for the city of Athens. That is a book of the wants, desires, aspirations of the people of the city. It's not something that one person can go in and just start making edits, like, we need to change this word, or we need to change this line, or we need to strike whatever. That should never happen with a comprehensive plan. So, so I'm mentioning that to council. I think it's time for council to consider constituting a new review, a review council or commission, if you may, if you'll allow me, rather. It calls for creating a seven-member council to be appointed by Athens City Council consisting of two representatives from the neighborhood associations, one member from the business community, one person from, with relevant expertise from Ohio University, and three members who are qualified electors in the city of Athens. Ex officio shall be the mayor. We gotta change this. Or there is, it should, or there designate. A council, a member of the Planning and Development Committee of the city council, the city planner, and this was interesting, I thought, a county, the county planner being involved in this as well. Which is fine, whatever. They serve three-year appointments, so and so forth, yada, 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 I'm not going to read this whole thing, but, you know, here it is in black and white. And I, I think that this is a path to take to where this commission goes through and looks at everything. And also, I would contend that this commission would reach out to individuals from our Asian American and Pacific Islander population in Athens, or AAAA, or reaching out to our LGBTQ plus population in the city of Athens, or through Pride. You know, there's, as you were indicating, there are so many things that really need, we need voices from different constituency groups to really make this the best document that we possibly can have. And we have an opportunity with this five-year review to go back and look. The other thing, that five-year review creates for us a document, basically to see where we are. How are we doing with the things that we have put into the comprehensive plan? But bear this in mind, comprehensive plan is the aspirations of a municipality. It's not a law. It's not a mandate. There's no real teeth to it to say, you will do these things by this date. It's, it's the will of the people is what the comprehensive plan is. You know, there were, there was hundreds of people who weighed in on everything from our corridors, to the uptown business area, to neighborhoods, to arts parks and recreation, to, you know, you name it, it's in there. You guys have seen the chapters inside that book. And so without going on, on, on and on and on, I, I believe that's where we need to start, Member McCary, and, and get, you know, form a commission. It's in council's power to do that. I'd be more than happy to sit in that, so I'm, we're listening closely to what has been accomplished. When I became mayor in 2016, I had already gone through the comprehensive plan from cover to cover, and that's when I recognized, I'm not waiting until 2027, because that was the timeline to sit there and have the next version of the comprehensive plan, because we'd already accomplished about 80% of the things that were mentioned inside that document at that point in time. You know, so it's a dynamic, it's a dynamic document. It's a dynamic, like I said, book of aspirations for those who weighed in on what they wanted to see our city become in the future. But it, but it is a plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the public, then, any comments or questions on this agenda item for the Committee of the Whole regarding the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan? Seeing none, do you, members of the Committee of the Whole, have any questions or comments about the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan? Members Spillness?
Yeah, thank you. I really like a lot of the, actually, just about everything you said in here, and I think it's great. So what I think I'm hearing from the mayor is, that's great, but we need to have this whole committee to do something with it. So does that mean we really, we can't really do much now? It's just, you want to alert people that these are things that I think are important. And I would agree.
And it may be that, since we're discussing at this committee, a potential next step might be to take action to convene the commission?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Other members of the Committee of the Whole? Member Swank?
I really appreciate what the mayor said, and if you'll indulge me to read five sentences, just to take everything he said and condense it. And I do appreciate what you said about the plan. This is the introduction to the comprehensive plan. The Athens 2040 Plan endeavors to establish a collective vision for our community and aims to achieve that vision by plotting courses of action in line with the vision. Plan identifies goals and ambitions as a community, seeks to understand citywide and neighborhood problems, and sets recommendations for our city council and city leaders. This plan is the start of a new, more agile and responsive era for planning in our city. This plan offers short, mid, and long-term recommendations. This plan is not intended to be static and should be updated and revised every five years. The only real mandate in this is the last sentence. This plan, and that's not even a total mandate, but it's pretty close. The plan is not intended to be static and should, doesn't say must, but said should, but that's pretty much a mandate, to be updated and reviewed every five years. Thank goodness we have Debbie Walker, because no one up here or over there was around in 2006. And there's only one as in this ordinance, which is very important and I think germane to the conversation. Whereas, said commission will oversee the performance measurement system of the city's comprehensive plan. Actual data, actual data, performance measurement system of the city's comprehensive plan. You would have to be an ostrich with your head in the sand to not know what's going on in Columbus with Senate Bill One. Particularly as it affects Ohio University and what could have a cleaning of the house of several areas and departments. And if that happens, who's left in the city of Athens to make sure that these things, not only with equity, but in other areas, continue? And I think that's the commitment we're making here, and I've heard it from Members Spillness, it's already established, council just needs to do a good job of selecting these individuals. And then this committee can go to work. We can amend this to give them a timeline to get this measurement done so that we can move into years six through 10. To show where we've been and what we've done, particularly what we've done, and what's the next five years. So I don't know where this thing came from. I saw it when I sat down here today, but I'm glad it surfaced, because I think it frames the context of the charge that we have by ordinance that is now almost 19 years old.
Thank you, Members Swank. Other members of the Committee of the Whole? A comment I have, given the city's recent discussions of the potential income tax increase, is that the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan, from my perspective, would inform our discussions about what the priorities of the city are. And if there are priorities that are established in the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan, such as expanding bus service, then we might just inform part of our conversation about use of income tax to, to that end, to say it's supported by something that's already in the comprehensive plan, that perhaps we recently had a discussion that says is still valid. Or we say, we want it to happen whether or not the, the income tax plan to increase goes into effect. So I just want to mention that this document theoretically reflects priorities, but I also hear that it's really recommendations. And I think the way to kind of close that gap between what's a recommendation that just came from an unknown number of hundreds of citizens some time ago, and what really reflects the shared priorities of the administration, council, and how we can kind of use that to leverage and inform what we are spending money on. So that's one thought I have. And then the next is just to confirm potential next steps, would it require action from council to reestablish the commission?
President Krell?
Thank you, Member McCary. My reading, and I didn't have a good chance to look at it really in depth, was that that previous ordinance was focused on the previous comprehensive plan. I don't know legally whether we need to establish a new ordinance, creating a new commission that focuses on the current mayor saying no.
This doesn't speak to any timeframe, which is really kind of interesting, because when I was on city council in 2012 to 2015, the end of 2015, I didn't know that there was a, that this existed.
So just a quick question, who are the members of that commission?
Pardon me?
Who are the members of the commission, if it's, if it's still intact?
It would have expired. Their terms of law would have expired.
Okay, so there is expiration for the members?
Yeah.
And they were never reappointed?
That's correct.
Three-year terms, I think he said.
Yeah.
Clerk of council would know.
Okay, so it was allowed, for some reason, just to wilt or disappear?
Or just did.
Right. Okay, so that's why I thought maybe it had to be connected to the newest plan, but if it doesn't, I'm all for this.
And would it just be, oh, Mr. Mayor?
No, again, I, I feel that it doesn't need to. It already exists. It's not something that's been repealed, so, so that's one thing. But number two, I, I think since that, there isn't anything that would prohibit it from being used moving forward, and we do have language in the current comprehensive plan to review every five years, it's perfect. I mean, let's just keep, let's get this going. You know, and everyone has a three-year term, so we'll have to replace people or whatever the next go around, but that's fine. You know, it's just, it's, we have it in place. Don't reinvent the wheel.
My final comment would just be a note of appreciation to Paul Luke, who was our city planner at the time of the creation, and to all those who did help provide input into the plan. If you search on even YouTube, Athens, Ohio, 2040 Comprehensive Plan, you'll find some of the info sessions and workshops that were done to gather input. But we have a new city planner and administration who's hopefully ready to help us advance this, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate you acknowledging Paul, and we currently have an outstanding city planner right now who's ready to get this going and move forward with it. But again, as an ex officio member, it's council's, it's your responsibility, based on that ordinance, to go ahead and select the individuals who serve in the categories that I've mentioned, mentioned earlier.
So how exactly do we do this? I want to make sure that we have concrete steps here to, that everyone's in agreement on. What is the next step?
It's my thought that with some of our commissions, we have an application. Mr. Mayor, do you see some, some guidance already in your hand?
I know that Clerk Walker has ordinance 0-93-06 dated September 18th of 2006. Your guidelines for setting up something is all right here in terms of how you do it. And.
And that is part of the city code.
Yes.
So it may be possible to solicit some interest from the public? Excellent. Any final comments? Mr. President, I will say that that concludes the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Member McCary, and that finishes our committee meetings this evening. Thank you for attending.